Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for November 18th, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. We'll begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. We'll begin with the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is no change to the Order of Business this evening.
Any questions on the Order of Business as presented? Not, I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion on the Order of Business as presented? Not, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that the Commissioners wish to discuss? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into Administration and Finance. First item this evening will be our Special Assessment Committee Appointments. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. City staff conducted interviews for positions on the Special Assessment Committee. After completing the interviews and evaluating process, the following individuals have been selected to serve on the committee. Trevor Ernst, Adam Brzezinski, and Susie Sobolak. These candidates demonstrated qualifications, interest in public service, and an understanding of the committee's responsibilities. Their appointments will support the development of the Special Assessment Commission. City Administration recommends the Commission formally approve these selections. Trevor and Susie are both in the audience this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Are there any questions for the appointed individuals in the audience? Not, if there are no questions from Commissioners, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the Special Assessment Committee Appointments? Just one quick, I'll make sure I look back in here, the term of the appointments? Where you determine that, how long they're going to be on there?
Yes, they will be staggered. At our first meeting we'll decide as far as the length and tenure of those, but they'll be staggered between a one, two, and a three-year term.
Okay, thank you. There are no further questions? Go ahead and vote. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item is our City Administrator's Annual Performance Review. By contract, we, as Commissioners, need to do an annual review of Mr. Dossinger. And he is the only employee that we have a contract with, a direct employee. We have a contract with Ms. Winko and her firm for legal services, but according to his contract, we must perform an annual review. And Mr. Dossinger's annual review was submitted by the City Commission. And his evaluation, he came in very high marks. His overall score met and exceeded what is needed for his performance review, pay increase. Some of the comments by Commissioners, Mr. Dossinger does an excellent job in keeping us up to date with knowledge of the policies and operations, and he knows how to apply them to day-to-day situations. Mr. Dossinger takes challenges head-on and has made great strides in understanding the role of the City Administrator. Dustin's work product is always high-quality and provides detailed information to the One Commissioner basically stated that, heard tons of positive comments from individuals within the community about him maintaining relationships with community members. He's very goal-oriented, self-motivated, and takes on daily challenges. He is excellent at conveying the Commission's intent and lets the public know what the city's direction is. And he continues to work and develop his skills with his relationship between the executive team and other city employees. So, another great year, Mr. Dossinger. And thank you for providing the service to not only the City Commission, but to the community of Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Commission. I certainly enjoy serving the community and look forward to accomplishing more goals and items in the future.
So it is, with that, I would put before you, say, Commission. Mr. Dossinger has met his goals, his performance goals, as we have set in his contract, so I'd look for a motion to approve his pay increase.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion or questions? Any comments? If not, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll move into our Chapter Six Ordinance Amendment. This will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Included in your packet for your review is, for the second reading, of Ordinance Number This is going to be an code amendment to Chapter Six dash eighty-one, which would essentially clarify and add some additional language to that existing section, talking about raising and keeping up domestic power or livestock. It just adds a clarification sentence for us, just says that the purpose of this section does not include a school operating out of private residence. Just again, for the public, this does not mean that the City of Dickinson is allowing chickens in the City of Dickinson, so I want to make sure that everybody is clear and aware of that. This just helps us deal with enforcement issues when this issue arises. So, no changes have been made since the first reading, and City staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Ms. Winko on the Chapter Six Amendment? And this is the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1839. If there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into Item D, our Legacy Square 2026 Concession License, Liquor License Bid. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. The City of Dickinson requested bids for the Dickinson Legacy Square 2026 concession liquor license for the upcoming year. The minimum alcohol license bid for Dickinson Legacy Square remained at $3,000. This figure reflects the cost of renewing a Class A liquor license. We received bids from two interested parties. They are Bernie's Esquire Club and the All-In Events and Catering. Bid openings occurred at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, November 14th, 2025, in City Hall Commission Chambers. The highest bidder was Bernie's Esquire Club in the amount of $6,013. City Administration recommends the City Commission award Legacy Square 2026 concession liquor license at Bernie's Esquire Club.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the 2026 concession liquor license bid? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next presentation will be our Monthly Financial Report. This will be presented by Deputy Finance Director Greenwood.
Good evening, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. In your packet is the financial report for October. Our general fund balance is currently at 11.5 million. And the moment you've all been waiting for, our sales tax is up. We're finally seeing the effects of our, the new businesses in town. We received 824,000 in the month of October for the 1% sales tax. And 412,000 for the half percent sales tax. So far, we are 482,000 over last year at this time. Our hospitality tax is up overall. We are above last year by about 28,700. Our oil impact payment was just under last year's. We received 1.47 million. And we're still under last year's revenue by about 1.1 million. And then I wanted to give you more of a breakdown of what makes up the oil payment that we receive every month. Starting in September, we're getting 174,475 from state funding, and this is for the airport infrastructure fund, so we are not allowed to use this money on our own city projects. This is part of the legislative session that we had this summer, which established the hub city debt relief pool, which has to be used for airport. The other part of our monthly payment is the 568,000 that we get from the state. And then about half the payment is from county revenue, which varies depending on how much revenue the county receives. So for the October payment of the 1.4 million, you can just see that about 12% of that we can't use, so this might give us some, just some more information on when we're planning for our oil impact revenue and how much we can actually spend and budget for. Do you have any questions on that? And then our general fund summary, the benchmark at this point is about 83%, so we're right on track with our revenues and expenses. And then for utility revenues, we are keeping up with expenses, and that's right on track, too.
Thank you, Ms. Greenwood. So the first effects of TJ Maxx and Hobby Lobby, we're seeing those with this report?
Yep.
Any other questions on the Monthly Financial Report? We'll move into our HR Monthly Report. This will be presented by HR Director Nomenick.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. First up, we have the Police Department. We currently have five openings for police officer. We had done some interviews recently. We have two still in the background and continue to search for those open positions. Public Safety Telecommunicator, one, we had two openings. We did fill them both. Fire Department, we've got two openings for the firefighter paramedic. We did hire Misty Marks recently. The part-time paramedic, we have two openings, continue to search there. Part-time firefighter, that's kind of a ongoing open until filled. We did make two opening, our two positions, offers that we filled there for Tori and Chad. And then Public Works, Street Maintenance Operator, we did interviews today. We've only got one opening there. Did some interviews today on that one. Scale Service Representative, one opening, and that's been filled. Water Reclamation Facility Manager, it's been a difficult one for us. We've had, we haven't opened until filled. We did do some interviews recently and did not make an offer, so we'll continue to search for the right candidate there. Buildings and Grounds Operator, we had one opening, and Corey Torodowski transferred back to Buildings and Grounds. The City Assessor Position, we had one opening. We did make an offer. We have a start date of December 15th for that, so we're looking forward to having that person join us. Finance, we have the Finance Senior Accountant is what we re-titled this position. We did have some interviews for this, and were, when it was a different title, we redid the job description, and the position just closed. We had one applicant, so we're reviewing that right now. Haven't scheduled the interviews yet. Museum, we had a part-time Visitor Services Attendant position that's been filled, and that, we just did the orientation this week. Municipal Court, Deputy Clerk of Court, one. We made two hires there. Harriet Phillips is currently working in that role. We had a new position for 2026. We've made an offer, and they're still in the background, looking to start that person real soon. And I would take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenick. Any questions on the Monthly HR Report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up, we'll move into Public Works. We have a voluntary special improvement for a water service line replacement on 1513 First Street West. This will be presented by Public Works Director Prowse.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you tonight, to ask for your consideration for a resolution to authorize a voluntary special assessment for a water service line replacement for the property owners Theodore B. and Dane Thie McCoy, who reside at Lot Two, Block Three, College Avenue in the City of Dickinson. Physical address of the property is 1513 First Street West. The homeowner did reach out to several contractors within the area and was, did receive one quote from one contractor for the estimated amount of $3,149.75. The terms of this special assessment will match the Special Improvement District 2025-03-1, which is 3.7% interest over a 10-year term. Special Improvement District 2025-03-1 was approved by the City Commission on November 19th of 2024 at our City Commission meeting. The property owner is voluntarily requesting this water service line be replaced and assessed to the property. Public Works staff has met with the property owner and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions on this special assessed water line replacement? This will be Resolution 51-2025. Any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have a Public Works Quarterly Report. This will be presented by Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. I am Jake Waldo. I'm your Deputy Public Works Director. I have a lot of information to share this evening. This report will cover Quarters Two and Three for Public Works. I will try and move through it pretty quickly. It's going to be a lot of statistics. I would also like to say right out the front here, my intent is to change our reporting structure to do a statistical report twice a year, and then to do updates for you all of just key goings-on with the department every month. So, starting in January, I expect you'll see a lot more of me, but for shorter periods of time, at a shot. So, in kind of an oversight, it has been a very busy second and third quarter for Public Works, between the unexpected rain events that we had this year, the enhancements to the level of support that we're providing to projects around the city, and then just general enhancements to the services we provide to the community. Everyone's been hard at work trying to keep up. Fortunately, and I know some people would say this isn't fortunate, but for us right now, it feels like it. Fortunately, winter is on the horizon, and these projects are starting to come to a close, so now we can shift our focus toward managing whatever precipitation we will no doubt continue to get as we shift into the weather month. The winter months, excuse me. Our Asset Essential Service requests, we have sort of been peaking, or excuse me, we have sort of been evening out the peaks from the last two years here. I don't see any particular anomalies in these numbers. For our Buildings and Grounds Crew, over the course of the second and third quarter, they mowed and trimmed approximately 705 acres of land. Weed control along city properties and right-of-ways was a large focus for them this year. We've been contracting with a firm that does drone spraying. They have a remotely piloted drone that goes out, and it does about six days, what would be six days of work for our team, can get it done in a single day. So that's been a great boon to be able to actually keep those areas looking presentable, keep the weeds under control. They did have one rather large project over the course of the summer. The backup fuel source for the backup generator at the Public Safety Center failed. That propane line corroded to an extent where it was just beyond repair and had to be replaced. So that team did a really great job coordinating with those contractors, getting that backup to the backup up and running again. An overview of our Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Calls. This pie chart represents 271 calls in total over the course of Quarters Two and Three, and kind of shows you how those were split out. For our Fleet Maintenance Crew, we have our second quarter work orders here generated for them. As usual, solid waste is leading the way. They just have such a large amount of rolling stock, and that's pretty complex equipment, that there tend to be breakdowns. In Quarter Three, we see a similar story. The only major uptick from any department was the ambulance. The ambulance was only in operation as a department for one month out of Quarter Two, and I don't even think they were fully operational at that time yet, so that was why they only had one. That 22 seems like a much more realistic number for what we can expect from them. For Forestry, our City Forester did include some statistics on this slide for you guys, but I do want to focus on the great work that Blake and his team did on beautification this year. You guys no doubt saw hanging baskets, those planters, the, those whiskey barrel planters around town over the course of the summer. Those, those folks did just absolutely fantastic work, keeping all of that looking sharp all year long. The other highlight for Forestry, they did a pilot project for a porous pavement for tree boxes, which you can see in that photo on the top there on that slide. We've been having a lot of internal discussion about what to do with those sidewalk cutouts for trees. This porous pavement was a pilot project that covered five of those locations in the parking lot or along the parking lot just north of the old City Hall location at 99 Second Street. Looking good so far. I'll be really curious to see how they hold up over the winter, and hopefully this, this could be a good solution for us long-term. It's much more cost-effective than the steel grates, and it should present much less of a tripping hazard than the plastic grates. For solid waste, we have our household waste and recycling tonnages. Our recycling stays pretty steady, right around 3.8 or just shy of 4% of the total waste that we receive is able to be diverted away from the landfill and sent to a recycling center. An important note there, it's included on both of these slides. This is Quarter Two, and there's Quarter Three. An important note for both of those is that our household waste includes both in the city what we collect, and then also what we collect from the entire surrounding area, but we only offer recycling services to residential properties within the City of Dickinson. And I'm very excited to see how this picture sort of changes as we do the Baylor Building expansion, and then we're able to expand out some of those recycling services further. Our landfill tonnages for Quarter Two, you can see we're pretty well in line with years past. Steady, steady creep up for the month of June. Quarter Three, however, you can see September is significantly larger than it was the last two years. The reason for that is the support that we've been offering for those projects. As soon as all that material started coming back from digouts, concrete work being done, all that gets recorded and logged, and there was quite a lot of that this year. Moving into Scale Visits, we're going to see a very similar story. Quarter Two, we're pretty well in line with how we've been the last two years. And Quarter Three there in September, we have a pretty significant uptick, again, from those projects and all the materials being hauled away from them. For our Streets Crew, that Rock and Oil Use numbers, that is on spray patch or Dura-Patching for our streets to help combat anything from potholes, alligatoring, those sort of items. And then they also did include a list of expenses that went into the preventative maintenance of our streets for this summer. For our Water Utilities, this is our consumption from Southwest Water as a city. You can see that, I'll have to look at mine because it's closer to my face here. For July, August, and September, you can see that our consumption is down pretty considerably from last year. I would credit that to the significant amount of rainfall that we received. I know a lot of folks around town water their lawns with potable water. I assume there was a much, much lower necessity to do that this year. Our Utility Billing Work Orders have been pretty significantly higher than they were in years past. This can largely be credited to the fact that they've been finishing out their project to replace all the registers within the City of Dickinson. They're not quite at 100% yet, but they're really getting down to the final ones, the homeowners, who are either tough to get ahold of or have tricky work schedules that have to be worked around, those sort of items. So, the light at the end of the tunnel is definitely showing on that project. Our Wastewater Folks, over the course of the summer, their sort of main project is that they televised 41,000 foot, or just over 41,000, I think it was 41,054 feet, if I remember right, of sanitary sewer line that they televised in support of 2025 and 2026 projects. Really wanting to get a good, firm grasp on exactly what the condition of the infrastructure under the street is. That way, we don't end up in a situation where we have a brand-new street and crumbling sewer line underneath it. For our Water Reclamation Facility, April was a slow month for reuse of wastewater. Our primary customer that purchases it, the refinery out to the west of town, had some work that they were doing, had their processes shut down for a few weeks. That's where that came from. But overall, we remain pretty steady at about 24% or just shy of a quarter of our total effluent being sold for beneficial reuse. We have our land-applied sludge from the wastewater treatment facility. This is also a form of beneficial reuse that goes into that field adjacent to the property to fertilize that land and make it more appealing as farmable land. In total, that's 5.2 million gallons of sludge that was land-applied, six- In total, that's five point two million gallons of sludge that was land-applied, six thousand gallons at a time with a tank that's pulled behind a tractor. That's just about one and a half times what our total storage capacity is. So they were, they were really moving some solids this year. I do want to place a note here as we get towards the end. Over the course of this winter, the engineering team for the city of Dickinson has agreed to assist us in upgrading and enhancing our preventative maintenance program. On the right-hand side of that slide there is a snippet of the computer program that we use currently. Every piece of equipment inside of every building has to be manually entered into that program along with the entire O and M rotation for that. We have many, many of the critical assets that the city currently maintains already in this program. But getting this refined, getting this up to that hundred percent is going to create a lot of sore fingers from data entry. And I'm really grateful to engineering for agreeing to take part in that. Lastly here, I do want to highlight our new faces around the Public Works Department. As HR Director Nomenek said when she was up here for her report, we're sitting in a really good spot for recruiting and retention right now. I'm very, I'm very pleased with where we're at. We currently have three vacancies, one in streets, one in water, and then that WRF manager position, which is a new position. But I would like to really give some credit to our leadership team, keeping that morale up, keeping the energy high, keeping folks engaged, finding ways to thank people for the service that they provide to the community. And hopefully, hopefully this slide will come off of this presentation sometime soon. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. Any questions?
Good work.
No, thank you for all your, your hard work.
Thanks. Have a great night.
You too. All right, is move into our public hearing section. This evening, the very first, and only item we have in public hearing this evening is a rezoning request from WIN Hart River Fourth Rezone. This will be presented by City Planner Burchak.
Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Burchak, City Planner. So the applicants are requesting the approval of a zoning map amendment from low-density residential or R1 to medium-density residential or R2 for lots thirty-two through thirty-six of Block One of the Hart River Fourth subdivision, which is located within the city of Dickinson. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for the construction of three, four-unit multifamily residential buildings, which would also require a future replat of the property in order to replat them into sixteen thousand square foot lots, which would be what is required to permit any four-unit apartment buildings. So for this project, the city has received numerous public comments, including a petition from local residents. I believe it had a total of seventy-seven signatures. It has not yet been verified, but it has been included in your packet, as well as a letter of opposition from one of the nearby residents, just stating that they are not interested in seeing this property rezoned. There, as per the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public engagement meeting was also held by the applicant in the City Commission chambers on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And during this meeting, the applicant presented the planned lot layout and the planned site plan for all of the proposed construction. And there was a lot of discussion about how the construction of Second Avenue Southwest would be funded and whether or not development would be feasible without this rezone being approved. The general consensus from the applicant is that it would not be. And the construction of Second Avenue Southwest would be done through a development agreement with the applicant and it would not be specially assessed to any of the nearby residents. It would be paid for completely by the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission also requested the history of any accidents, traffic stops, and complaints of speeding along Seventh Street Southwest due to some concerns over safety in the area and whether or not any additional apartment units would affect that. Based on research completed by the Dickinson Police Department, there were a total of three documented driving complaints, two accidents, and one citation or warning in this area. And the details of these incidents should be included in your packet as well. As of now, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have and staff would recommend approval of this rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Burchak. Commissioners, before I open up the public hearing, do you have any questions for Ms. Burchak or city staff? There are no questions from the City Commission. I will open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak to this matter, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your questions, concerns on this project.
Good evening. My name is Presley Krebs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of the proposed lots from R1 to R2. While there are two properties nearby, rezoning these lots would negatively impact the neighborhood and surrounding community. The long-term vision outlined in the Dickinson Comprehensive Plan, even with adjacent R2 zoning, these lots are part of a predominantly single-family residential area. Rezoning would change low-density, quiet nature of the neighborhood, increase noise level and traffic congestion, reduce privacy for existing homeowners, especially in the backyards and shared spaces, and also interrupt the aesthetic of agricultural cohesion that makes this area attractive to families. Rezoning R2 would allow high turnover temporary workforce housing, even if families are permitted. Transient residence being frequent, frequent changes in occupancy that disrupts community cohesion and makes it difficult for neighbors to build long-term relationships. It also increases, increases demand on public services. Short-term or temporary residents may be straining utilities, road maintenance, and emergency services. Safety supervision concerns mean high turnover can lead to less accountability and neighborhood watchfulness, potentially increasing minor crime and safety risks. Rezoning could negatively, negatively affect property values in the surrounding area as well. Homeowners invest in R1 neighborhoods expecting stability and low-density development. Increasing density or transient occupancy could reduce the appeal of neighborhood to future buyers, as it did for my husband and I. The long-term financial impact of residents equally equity and investments should be considered. R2 typically brings more vehicles per lot, which could increase, increase traffic flow congestion on streets designed for single-family homes, pose a safety risk for children, pedestrians, and cyclists, and cause overflow parking into neighboring streets for the, further stressing the neighborhood. Higher density increases demand for water, sewer, stormwater systems, which may not be sized for additional units. Police, fire, and emergency medical services potentially increasing response times. School, school capacity in local parks if the unit attract families with children. More dwellings mean more impervious surfaces, which increases stormwater runoff, drainage issues, and flooding risk. Landscaping, green space, and neighborhood aesthetics could be negatively impacted, as well as local wildlife and natural drainage patterns, patterns may be disrupted. Rezoning could create enforcement challenges. Fire, building, and safety codes, R2 or multifamily development triggers more stringent requirements that could be difficult to meet. Transient housing compliances, if the units are used for temporary workforce housing, additional permits or inspections may be required. Rezoning could weaken community bonds in a sense of safety. Families move to neighborhoods expecting stable neighborhoods and predictable environments. High-density or transient housings could reduce neighborhood participation in schools, local events, and civic organizations. Increased density could also alter social fabric, making it harder for neighbors to look out for one another. It could lead to further incremental density increases in single-family areas, gradually undermining the city's plan goals based on the growth chart posted in the city of Dickinson website. The neighborhood is primarily single-family dwellings. It may not meet the actual housing demand, considering the current vacancies listing for existing apartments in town. Proceeding could result in vacant or underutilized units if the market does not support duplex or multifamily occupancies. This does not align with long-term visions for family-friendly neighborhoods. Rezoning could risk, could reduce livability in several ways. Increased traffic, noise, and parking issues, potentially for short-term rental or temporary workforce use, will disrupt community stability. Reduce green space privacy in outdoor areas for children and families, as well as impacts on school capacity, local parks, and recreational opportunities. In conclusion, rezoning these lots would alter neighborhood character, introduce transient or high-turnover housing risks, potentially reduce property values, strain infrastructure and public services, increase traffic and safety concerns, cause environmental and stormwater issues, create legal or code enforcement challenges, undermine long-term planning principles, weaken community cohesion and neighborhood livability. Please think about this as if this was your backyard. For all those reasons, I respectfully urge the board to deny the rezoning request and remain R1 designation for these lots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is Larry Iverson and I handed out a paper to you.
Mr. Iverson, could you be a little bit closer to the mic there? There you go.
Handled out that paper to you so you could see a couple of points that I was wanting to bring the attention. I've got about thirty-five years of inspecting houses, appraising them, setting values all the way from the last three states here, including rounding North Dakota here. And out in Seattle, I went up to millions of dollars of homes and appraised them and figured out what the values were and all that stuff. Auditing for underwriting for insurance companies and stuff. So there is a correlation to these kind of developments in our single-family residence area. And the first one I want, number one here is that the Planning Board said that the, all the assessments, special assessments would be paid for by the developer. And it, it could be down the line a bit before somebody would find out that it is an impact on some of the structures in the, in the city there that would have to be upgraded or something. So I guess I would ask the council here that if they would agree with the Planning Board on that and all those kind of assessments would be paid for by the developer.
Our understanding is that the, all the costs will be on the developer for this project.
Even if the future upgrades for some related places.
Future upgrades can never be predicted in any area within the city.
But if it could be directed rightly to that, the cause of it, that that building has excess waste, excess water use, excess traffic, excess stuff, then they would be responsible for that.
Well, when city engineering goes through the pre-development plans, they are able to look at, and the city engineer can back me up, they're able to look at right now that this development, there is capacity there for this development that are in the lines right now, be it water or wastewater or storm.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Preliminary, we did look at all of this, but ultimately density-wise from, from R1 to R2, doesn't make a dramatic impact on water, sewer, or storm sewer, so.
On number four there, the valuation, we all pretty much admit that nobody want to build a house or buy a house right close to apartment complexes or multifamilies. So it does reduce the value of a house or property of single-family owners around the place. So would the city say they agreed to reduce the taxes of people around there that would have a third party assess all the property and determine? The close ones would be pretty good drop in valuation. The further away they get, it'd be less. So would the city agree to something like that?
Mr. Iverson, we're, we're not going to agree to any kind of special valuation process. Your neighborhood would be valued in a, in a normal process. The street I live on right now, the, the very next adjacent street has R2 in it. I don't get any special consideration. I live on Seventh, Eighth is all, the north side of Eighth is all R2. And Commercial too, adjacent to me. I don't get any special consideration because R2 is there or Commercial is, is a half a block from me. So your, your area would be valued by the city assessor in a normal process, be it the, if the process, your house by its age, what the neighborhoods are doing for improvements and in just the general market value in our city. So we're, we're not going to agree to any kind of special valuation process just for a neighborhood.
Okay. So the assessor's office would consider that stuff though, wouldn't they?
Well, they, they consider everything when they come and look at the value of your house.
That would be a valid point to.
They just, they consider everything. Cities change over time and, and houses go down in value or go up in value. The, the age of your home is a, one of the largest considerations. But also if we agree to some kind of special valuation and then you go ahead and remodel your home, well, we'd have to take that into consideration.
Cool. Yes.
Right. So we, we take everything into consideration when the assessor, when the assessing team comes around. They're going to look at that, that neighborhood and they, the largest thing there with your valuation is what houses are selling in your neighborhood for. That's what it'll be based upon.
Fluctuates too.
It fluctuates, yes.
But the surrounding makes a big difference too. And the, the other thing is about the, the traffic and stuff, that there is a detrimental part too of the increase in traffic around multifamily places that loses buyers too. So, well, thank you for listening to me and letting me know on this. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Iverson. Does anyone else wish to come forward?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kayla Fisher. I'm, I live in the area. This is my husband, Ryan.
Ryan Fisher.
And maybe Josh can answer this question for me. So there's a creek that runs underneath the road on Eighth Avenue Southwest, just to the west of this location. And quite often it floods. And I'm wondering how much of an impact increasing buildings on that section of land will increase water runoff to that road. I know that that road and that culvert has been worked on multiple times in the last two years. Just recently, it only had about like maybe an inch of rain and it was already half flooded across the road. So I don't know if that's been taken into consideration or not, or if it's brought, been brought to your attention specifically.
Yeah, so the, the drainage or the creek to the west of this area, I'm aware of the fact that it's located within the floodplain. And I'm also aware of the fact of we will be looking at with any plant smittles and those kind of things, any stormwater detention criteria or needs associated with this. But at the time of the rezone, it's based on the, the allowable uses, not so much the, the, the specific other details related to engineering functions and whatnot. We just look at it from a general perspective at this point from a rezone standpoint.
Okay. So that's not something that's been looked at at all then, as far as rain, rainy water runoff?
It will be looked at in the future. That's a guarantee.
After it's been rezoned is what you're saying.
Correct. It's not a requirement for a rezone.
It's not. Okay. Okay. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Can I, can I comment on?
Yeah.
So you're, you're referring to that drainage on, that goes under Eighth Avenue Southwest?
Underneath, I think it's Eighth Avenue Southwest, Diamond Drive, between Diamond and Hart.
My backyard bumps up right next to that, so forty feet of that is my backyard. And most of that drainage comes from the south, so.
From the south.
It comes from south of the, the inner dam. It comes from south of the, the inner dam back there, that, those fields.
Sure.
So, when it floods, usually that's when I have water in my backyard.
Uh-huh.
It's been maybe one time in the spring in the last fourteen years that I've lived there. So usually the water comes from the south of town.
Okay.
Is that's where it comes through and drains through.
I've just noticed before, you know, I mean, I take that road every day and I know that the water runs from our street, right in front of our house, straight down Seventh and goes that direction. I know exactly where that water goes. I mean, I could put a leaf in the water and see it go down that way. So, I, I don't know what, where that water would go exactly. I mean, I don't think anybody would know right now, but I just wanted to put that out there and see if anybody had any thoughts about it, so.
Yeah, appreciate the feedback. When, when we look at overall impervious coverage requirements, when you look at the, the differences between R1 to R2 and, and because we don't have an exact site plan and everything, so we don't know exact, uh, numbers, but the overall versus, the overall difference of that individual development compared to the, the entirety of the drainage system that, as Commissioner Murphy referenced, uh, much of that comes into city limits from out of city limits, so.
And everything Crab said, I second. Uh, our house faces directly to that lot and we have a four-year-old and a two-year-old. I came here the first meeting, the traffic is crazy. I think I've made three of those calls. I called the city police department asking for them to put a speedometer in front of my house. At the end of the day, when you call and nothing happens, what, you just keep calling people in for them to show up three minutes later, not catch them, they're not sitting there. We fully disagree. I think we have every lot surrounding this property that disagrees with this zoning. We're fine with the house being put up, but putting sixteen, uh, units. A garage is very unfortunate to look out your front window and see a apartment complex, uh, right across the street from your house. So. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Dylan Chalk, I live adjacent to the property that they're looking at rezoning.
What was your name again, sir?
Dylan Chalk.
Okay.
I live right adjacent to the property that's looking at being rezoned. I just asked, asked City Commission to just, just think about, would you like more apartments built in, in your backyard? I mean, every, there's very, very few neighbors and the vast majority of the neighbors are not supporting it. There's very few that are. Um, the community need for more apartments right now, there's vacancies all over town. There isn't a community need for more of this right now. And the neighborhood itself, there is not a need for this. Um, I don't know why, uh, we would like to see any of this rezoned. We're more than happy to have more development in the area as R1. You know, more nice new investment, new construction obviously benefits all of the neighbors. But putting R2 right next to, um, a bunch of existing R1, uh, it's not going to benefit the neighbors at all. It's going to hurt their values long-term. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Mary Adzro. I also have my backyard facing this proposed rezoning. I wanted to talk about the increased traffic flow. You have to realize if you put in a half-street, that half-street is going to empty out onto Seventh Street Southwest, increasing the traffic. Not only are they talking about putting up three apartment buildings, but also garages in the front of them. Uh, the parking requirements, from what I understand, are two spaces for every unit. That's going to flow out onto the street and on, not only on Second Avenue Southwest, but also on Seventh Street Southwest. Our property values will go down. It will be harder for me to sell my property with an apartment building looking at me. Doesn't matter if it's garages or the apartment building. Not only that, they're talking about doing a two-level, which means they're going to be looking right over the fence into the neighbors behind them, which is an R1 zoning. I do realize that there is an apartment building that's, that is set at R2, right there, adjacent to that lot. But at some point, you're going to have to stop the R2 zoning. Our, our neighborhood cannot support this. There's going to be too many people in the neighborhood, too much traffic. Increases the trash. I'm out there almost every week picking up trash in my bushes because of those apartment buildings. They empty the trash and of course in North Dakota, it's windy and we get everything blown across the field right at us. We're tired of it. Um, we went through this in 2010. I do have paperwork on that. I had a petition put out then, my neighbor and I did at that time, a hundred and thirteen signatures. They were trying to go from an R1 to an R3. I've been through this before, doesn't make me happy. There's nine units right now, there's nine separate apartment buildings on Seventh Street Southwest, one right after the other. We don't need three more apartment buildings put in that area. Not only that, across from those nine apartment buildings is a church, south of that is two more apartment buildings. Then we have three more complexes off of Eighth Street Southwest that were just put up after the tornado and because of the tornado. Um, the cost to homeowners, are we going to be required to put in sidewalks? It's going to be a half-street. You're going to get to the quant sets and there's going to be no more street because the quant sets sit in the middle of the road. How is that all going to work? Uh, not only that, there are electrical lines. If you actually have visited the property, there are electrical lines on that proposed Second Avenue Southwest that feed those quant sets. What's going to happen with that? What happens if you've got to get in there with a boom truck if there's a fire? You have to think of all the emergency services. How are you going to clean that road? Who's going to be responsible for keeping that open? There's absolutely not one advantage that I can come up with for the neighborhood, not one. What, what happens when the proposed developer sells all those apartment buildings? Then I've got an apartment building for anybody to rent and I've got more trash, more traffic, more felons, who knows? Who knows what's going to come in behind me? There's no guarantees here. If those quant sets go down tomorrow, are you going to want to put up more? More apartment buildings back there between two R1 sections? At some point, you have to come to a stop with putting an apartment building back there. Our neighborhood will not support it. We already have enough traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I am Cassandra McQuarter. I am here in support of my loved ones who live in this neighborhood. And, um, my take on this is, as I have heard reference of the multiple R2 zoning that's already in the neighborhood, I'm unclear as to why they're requiring more. Um, but I think what I really want to touch on is if the developer is purchasing this property, how is it relieving any of our housing, um, uh, difficulties that we're encountering now? Because it sounds like that's going to be limited to, um, certain candidates, certainly be living in these places. And I guess my biggest question for all of you is, there's not been a lot of discussion on how this impacts other resources as I've seen, um, positions open with fire departments and ambulance services and all this other stuff. There's not been a lot of discussion of how this impacts our educational system as well and our healthcare system as they're bringing in temporary nurses and as we've got teacher shortages and everything else like this, there's a lot of impacts with bringing in multifamily homes and bringing in an influx of, um, temporary housing and temporary, um, residents. And, and that's not really conducive to the long-term longevity of the Dickinson community that I have chosen to make home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Prowse and I live across the street from all this planning here. And, uh, excuse me. It's a school route, it's very busy there during the day, twice a day. Um, there's a fire route there and there's plenty of traffic there, day and night. Always people racing back and forth through there and like I says, the neighbors, we all voted against this, seventy-seven people. We're trying to get rid of it, we don't want it in our neighborhood, keep it R1. I had a, brought up a few different things. You know, there's apartment housing over off of States Avenue and Eighth Street over there. Why not put some more over there? There are threes right now, they can keep that in that neighborhood, neck of the woods. South of Win over there, there's all that slough and stuff. You know, we talked about this before too and it's zoned commercial. Well, they're trying to rezone this, well, why not rezone that and make that into a, into a apartment housing over there? That's all I got.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to come forward? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comments. This is ordinance eighteen forty. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions for city staff? Or questions for any of the individuals that submitted their concerns? Commissioner Murphy?
So even if this was R1, um, the comment on specials in that road would go through those, no matter if it was R1 or R2? If there were sidewalk specials that would go in, those would happen anyway?
I mean, in, in that case, I guess what we've done for new infrastructure is the developer's responsible for that. So I would assume that, that, uh, even if it was R1, that that would be the responsibility of the developer, regardless of zoning.
Just like.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Bear.
Ms. Burcheck, is there any reason why Mr. Win couldn't make an R1 work and put single, small, single-family dwellings in there instead versus a large apartment complex?
So, through discussions with the applicant, the main concern is the cost of that road infrastructure. Having twelve units is a lot more efficient at, uh, kind of generating the rent that can help pay off that road infrastructure as opposed to if you only have five single-family homes is the main concern.
Any further questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Riddle.
Looking at the layout, um, it's going to be way over to the west and I know that trail goes in there so them quant sets can be accessed, say with a big trailer, stuff like that. What's going to happen if this goes in? How are they going to get access to the quant set with big trailers and stuff like that?
So, access to those quant sets, it can still come in from the south how they've been accessing it so far. The main issue though is that that access currently is on private property anyway. So even if this were not to go through, if the owner decided that they no longer wanted these quant set owners to access their property from the north, they could put up a fence or just stop them from accessing the property as-is. So the rezone doesn't necessarily change that situation.
So what happens if, uh, say, pick one of the middle quant set owners puts up a no trespassing sign up?
It's kind of the same situation where, yeah. At this point, since it's private property, really the only guaranteed way to access the quant sets is that public right-of-way that's on the east side. The west side is not a guaranteed access point currently.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a couple of comments. I mean, we, we mulled this over to, uh, planning and zoning meetings. I was present at the special meeting or the forum they had regarding this. What it all comes down to is it fits in everything in our city ordinances, in our development code. There is existing R2 that's adjacent to this property. You're not, I know there's questions about single-family residences. Being a home builder, you're not going to get anybody to want to buy houses next to those quant sets. Which are fifty years old probably, at, at best.
All of that.
So, even if this wouldn't happen, let's say we left it R1, it, the feasibility of developing these into single-family residential lots, the cost would be prohibitive. It'll sit there empty forever. We have a developer right now that's willing to pick up all the cost on it, build some housing. And yes, he uses most of this housing for his own people, but that does not mean that down the road, there's apartments that would not be vacant and be for people to rent from this developer. I mean, he might not use them all down the road, it just depends. It, it, I mean, the best use of this property is probably some kind of multifamily dwellings. It, it is not R1. So, that's my opinion. The Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, eight-one vote felt the same because it does meet all our ordinances and our developmental guidelines. Otherwise, it's probably going to sit there vacant. The neighbors have had their opportunity to also buy these lots. So, well, they've been for sale for fifteen years as far as I know. Well, you guys know the.
I think you turn your mic off.
Oh. Well, how did this developer know, how did Wins know that it was for sale?
So, can I ask a question? Is the offset?
You have to.
Is the offset, I'm going to challenge this again, is the offset of what we're gaining with the property going to counteract the additional resources that's going to strain our community?
Okay, these people are here now, living in other apartments.
So why are we?
So they want to move them closer to their business. So those apartments that they're going to move out of are going to empty.
And how is that going to bring them other, closer to their other resources, like their food, their access to their food, their access to their healthcare?
I, I, I don't understand your question. It's, if they put them in an apartment on the north side of town, it's the same amount.
That's where all the grocery stores are. That's where all of their access is. If it's a temporary housing thing because of transportation problems, how are we helping them reach the rest of their needs?
It's not temporary housing, it's permanent housing.
You can call it what you wish, but we are all aware that it is temporary company housing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
As the newest addition to the street, we've only lived in the lot labeled seven sixteen for three months. Quant sets are pretty great neighbors, pretty quiet. That's all I had to say.
So you're saying, uh, Mr. Friedrich, that nobody's going to want to buy a house next to a quant set, correct?
What I'm saying is nobody's going to be willing to build a brand-new house with a minimum starting price of probably a half a million dollars today, next to a bunch of fifty-year-old quant sets that are mostly in not great shape.
So, what do you think the chances are that I'm going to get what my property's worth if I have apartment buildings behind me?
I think.
I challenge you on that one.
I think you have a better opportunity with a new complex in that street developed to get, your value will be better off than if they stay vacant.
I, I know there's some of us neighbors that also would love to buy those, those lots. And I think that would cure a lot of problems if we could just add on to our own properties.
I have one more question for you, Jason. It seems like out of all the commissioners here, everybody is kind of listening and trying to get some feedback from everybody. You seem to be just a proponent for this and I'm, and I'm curious.
I'm a, I'm a proponent for development.
And, and I'm curious why you're such a big proponent on this and I'm also. And I'm curious why you're such a big proponent on this and I'm also wondering in your, all your years of experience and with development and everything. Have you ever, when you're, you know, doing work with Legend Homes, you're doing concrete work, have you ever done work with wind construction? I'm just curious.
Of course I have.
So, so it seems like you guys have had a business relationship in the past and, and possibly still do so. How is that not a conflict of interest for you to be sitting up here and being a proponent when somebody that you do business with is gonna directly benefit? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just have one more comment. All through the code for rezoning and everything, the big words that stand out all the time is the general welfare of the residents of the area. And that's the biggest point that goes around, general, the general welfare of everybody in that area. Thank you.
Okay, well.
So I did a little bit of research on green spaces within city limits. And that was one of the big things that I noticed was it's, obviously, everybody likes a little bit of open space. Otherwise, we wouldn't be living in North Dakota. And I know we're in town, but having a little bit of that green, open air close to your house, super beneficial for your mental well-being, physical well-being. I have no problem like with housing in general. I don't think that apartments would be the best idea. I get what you're saying with how nobody's gonna wanna build a house there. I don't agree with that. I don't see why people wouldn't wanna have a house right there. A house would be great right there. I would be fine with having a quant set in my backyard. They would be quiet neighbors. I do agree with that. I mean, as funny as that point was, but there's a point to it. I just wanna say that I am opposed and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, public comment section is closed. Alright, commissioners, any further comments or questions? Again, this is ordinance number eighteen forty. If there are no further comments or questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick. I will second his motion. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
No.
Mr. Riddle?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
What was that, Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Aye? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move back into our regular agenda. Next item up is public safety, police, Back the Blue grant.
Good evening, President Decker and commissioners. I hope you guys have missed me. I've had a little hiatus with my light duty assignments, so I'm still almost there.
Good to see you back.
Getting better. This last legislative session resulted in the Dickinson Police Department receiving a total of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars in Back the Blue legislative appropriations. This is similar to previous legislative sessions allocation that you can remember from two years ago. This biennium's allocation is meant to support sworn law enforcement and correctional officers by rewarding longevity in the form of cash retention bonuses rather than targeting recruitment at the front end. We have developed what we believe to be a fair and equitable distribution plan for the funds which aligns with the spirit of the legislation. With that, seventy-five percent of the funds will be distributed equally amongst warrant staff. The remaining twenty-five percent of the funds will be distributed in a manner which specifically recognizes longevity within the department. It will be calculated using a matrix broken down by a number of months of service with the department with a ten-year, one hundred and twenty-month cap. With that, I'm asking for approval of the proposed distribution plan and will now stand for any questions you may have regarding this distribution plan.
Before, do we have any, do you have a table, any kind of calculated table?
Um, I do, but I do not have the numbers with me. We initially got a distribution which was changed. They drew the money back because it was off like three hundred and some odd dollars. So that is the latest amount I have. Remember if I wrote that in, I didn't break it down as far as specific numbers when I sent you that memorandum because I didn't know what the exact number was going to be at that time because the state did make some adjustments on the calculation what I just got on Monday.
Any other questions for Chief Siani? Does this need a resolution number or just?
Just approval, Mr. President.
Okay. Alright, if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a community development. We have the Baylor Building Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract to J E Dunn. This will be presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Mr. President, commissioners, for your consideration is a contract for a guaranteed maximum price construction contract with J E Dunn. J E Dunn was selected as a construction manager at risk for this building project. As such, J E Dunn has provided a construction estimates and suggestions to improve the value of this project. Have some notable project statistics for you. We've had seventy-two separate bidders on twenty-four bid packages and eighty-three percent of the dollar value of the contracts are to local contractors. The proposed project would start on May first of next year with the scale house in operation by November of twenty-sixth and the entire project substantially complete by July of twenty-seven. The G M P for this project is ten million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars as stated guaranteed maximum price. The city attorney has reviewed the contract and city engineering and public work staff recommends approval. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any questions on the Baylor Building Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract with J E Dunn? There are no questions. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a Federal Highway Administration Urban Federal Aid Maintenance Certification. This will be presented by Engineering Community Development Directors, Skoljak.
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration is the twenty-twenty-five Maintenance Certification for Urban Federal Aid Projects, which is a requirement for the Federal Highway Administration and the North Dakota Department of Transportation. This is related to projects that have received federal aid in the past. Maintenance certificate, certification states that all federal aid street projects have been inspected and that they are being maintained in good and safe condition for general public use. City engineering and public work staff recommend approval. This is just an annual certification that we have to send in. So stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoljak. Any questions on the Federal Administration Fed Aid Maintenance Certification?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Skoljak, you have the Highway twenty-two and Eighth Street. D W R letter of support.
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration is a letter of support to the North Dakota Department of Water Resources or D W R for the grant application to authorize the city of Dickinson to submit the project grant. One of the scopes of works associated with this project and associated with the roundabout that's scheduled to go in next year is to replace approximately, approximately about two hundred and fifty feet of existing six-inch water main with new eight-inch PVC water main. Where the new roundabout is to be constructed, the municipal water supply cost share is sixty percent according to the Department of Water Resources and forty percent then would be the city of Dickinson responsibility. It's our goal to replace the existing water main under where the new pavement is planned to go, ultimately to reduce future risks of breaks or any other damage to the new pavement sur, surface. Based on the current estimates, the grant eligibility would be for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Therefore, based on the sixty-forty cost allocation, grant eligibility would be eighty-four thousand and the city of Dickinson cost share is estimated at fifty-six thousand. Both construction and construction engineering costs associated directly with the water main scope of work replacement are eligible cost share items. This letter of support is a, is a D W R cost share requirement that started earlier in twenty-twenty-five. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoljak. Any questions on this D W, D W R letter? Now I look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Skoljak, you have the West Business Loop, D W R letter of support.
Good evening again, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration is a letter of support to the North Dakota Department of Water Resources or D W R for the grant application to authorize the city of Dickinson to submit the project grant application. One of the scopes of works associated with this project is to extend two segments of new water main totaling approximately three hundred lineal feet of new eight-inch PVC water main under the Interstate ninety-four West Business Loop, which is to be constructed next year or reconstructed next year. The municipal water supply cost share maximum through the Department of Water Resources is sixty percent, therefore leaving forty percent of this cost to the city of Dickinson. The goal here is to extend the existing water main under the new pavement to a westerly direction, to crossing the right-of-way line to provide municipal water supply for future development on the west side of this roadway. By extending the two water mains, the system will eventually end up being looped as future development builds out in the area and, and ultimately supplying municipal water supply to that new development area. Based on current estimates, this grant application is based on all eligible items is estimated at approximately a hundred and sixty thousand. Therefore, the D W R cost share estimate is ninety-six thousand and the city of Dickinson cost share estimate is sixty-four thousand. Both construction and construction engineering associated with this scope of work are eligible cost share items. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoljak. Any questions on this letter of support?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Riddle?
Mr. Skoljak, sorry if I butchered your last name, but
Quite alright.
Is this just getting putting in because the road project?
That's correct. In anticipation for future development, we'd prefer to put this in so that we don't have future payment cuts or other things like that.
Okay, so nothing on the docket as far as anybody looking at that or anything? This is just in case?
We have no current application submitted.
Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have the twenty-twenty-six Road Maintenance Task Order Amendment for Civil Science Infrastructure. Mr. Skoljak?
Good evening again, Mr. President and commissioners. For your consideration is a task order amendment with Civil Science Infrastructure Incorporated to perform stormwater modeling and storm sewer plans for the city of Dickinson project number twenty-twenty-six zero-one. This is the twenty-twenty-six Road Maintenance Project for an hourly fee as specified in the task order amendment of nineteen thousand and ninety-four dollars. The original project task order was approved at the February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five city commission meeting. The original task order included only looking at replacing the, the Kachinsky Drive stormwater outfall from Kachinsky Drive to the Hart River where this is in, was shown to be an eighteen-inch storm sewer main. And based on our stormwater master plan, which was published in May twenty-sixth, twenty-sixteen, that was currently shown at that time to be upsized to a twenty-four inch. When we started looking at some modeling in this area, what we're seeing is that basically, we're not seeing much of any change in the street flooding circumstances by just simply upsizing the outfall based on the number of inlets and then the circumstances in the street. The additional twenty-four inch storm sewer main needs to be replaced to bring that water into that pipe and prevent the even high-frequency storm events to, to cause impact to the street. Based on preliminary modeling that's been completed also, we're showing that most or most frequent types of storm events will be held within the curb lines. And, and so this, this should bring significant benefit to that area as far as overtopping the curb, which then flows in between the individual properties. We haven't necessarily had any specific feedback or concerns from the property owners yet on, on the, the buildings getting impacted, but it's more so property damage in between the properties that we're currently receiving some feedback on. So with that, city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoljak. Any questions on this task order amendment with Civil Science Infrastructure? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Skoljak, you got a monthly report?
Good evening again, Mr. President and commissioners. So our monthly report for engineering and community development. So on the planning side of the things, so far, we've received a total of twenty-seven individual development applications and you can see the, the overall allocation, number of Platts, special use permits, zoning map amendments, zoning text amendments, things like that. We've also received a total of seventeen individual lot modifications. So there's a significant amount of requests in that area. Those are the ones that are administratively approved. So, so we've been busy throughout this year working through those individual lot modifications as they've come in. And we have had a total of six applications for the Dickinson Revitalization Program that we've received so far. That's that program in, in collaboration with Gate City Bank. So glad to see the public is utilizing that opportunity. And in total so far this year, we've had thirty-four individual pre-application meetings as of last week. So, so still more potentially to come through the end of the year. Going ahead to building and codes, we've got the total number of building permits that have been paid and picked up. We do have the split on both commercial versus residential as well as then the split for in-city limits and then out in Starr County where our building department. where our building department does do the, uh, we're contracted to the building inspection reviews in, uh, Fort Star County. And that data range is through, uh, November twelfth, so as of last week. Engineering, uh, so these are the projects currently under construction. This, uh, percentage completes were, were based on November thirteenth data. Uh, and at that time, uh, some progress has been made on, on a couple of different projects, but, uh, we are making progress on the library, so if you've driven by, uh, starting to put some of the structural steel up and, and making good progress, happy to see a lot of the, uh, a lot of the work is starting to kind of button up that building and start getting it ready for winter conditions. Our twenty-twenty-five road maintenance projects, so even as of last week, our percentage completes, we, we kind of base these on a combination of both time spent on the project as well as total spend against the project. Uh, even as of last week, we were about seventy-five. Maybe we could have bumped that up to eighty percent, but, uh, but ultimately, um, as of Sunday evening, about nine o'clock, we did finish up all of the mill and overlay work associated with that project. So we're happy to see the, the project wrapping up there. Uh, number of, of, uh, kind of mine more cleanup items and those kind of things are gonna take place throughout this week and maybe even into next week. Our LED service line replacement project, about eighty-five percent complete. There's just a, a couple of things left to do, some concrete to pour in, some sidewalks and whatnot, but we're wrapping up that project as we speak. Our drainage emergency repairs off of Highway twenty-two, just south of Museum Drive, uh, we showed ninety-five percent complete on that. There was just a, uh, chain link fence that we had to get reinstalled, so that's kind of one of the last finish-up items, and then, uh, worked towards closing out that project. And, uh, then just a reminder, on the Sims Project from Second Street East to Ninth Street East, our, our, um, street lights are, are scheduled to be delivered, hopefully, middle of December. As soon as they are in Dickinson, uh, they'll work to get those up. They think that'll take somewhere between one and two days to get all of those installed, but everything else is ready. Uh, set those on the pole bases and then also, ultimately just terminate the electrical connections, so. Glad to see a number of the projects wrapping up and, and nearing completion. So we jump ahead to all the projects that are currently active in engineering. A couple notable, uh, notable items, so, uh, we did finish up our proposal reviews for our twenty-twenty-seven road maintenance project, as well as our twenty-twenty-seven water main replacement, uh, project, and, uh, sent out notifications to those that have been awarded for that. Uh, thank you Commissioner Baer for taking the time to review the proposals with us. Uh, our goal is to get those, uh, task orders, uh, in front of the City Commission before the end of the calendar year, so that is soon as, uh, work can proceed, uh, right after the, the new year. On the Mann's Dam Emergency Action Plan, as well as on the East Broadway Dam, the replacement of that dam with the rock riffles, there's a public engagement meeting scheduled for December third, twenty-twenty-five, from five to seven o'clock at the West River Community Seven, uh, Center, so, uh, look forward to the public showing up. Any of the commissioners that are interested, uh, certainly welcome. And otherwise, uh, we did sort these by percentage complete, and so you see a number of the projects that are in that hundred percent category or very near to that hundred percent category are working ahead to try to get, uh, project bid for next year and, uh, clean that off our plate so we can get started on the twenty-seven projects, so. And our geographical information system, um, so, uh, ultimately, working on getting that GIS technician position posted with HR. Uh, I believe in the next couple of weeks we'll have that posted, start working towards trying to recruit for that. And, uh, updating a number of attributes within the system, and then, um, and then ultimately looking at some of the new applications with some of the new software as, as that's been included. Testing some of the new features, making sure that it's still compatible with our database functionality, and, and then, uh, uh, looking ahead for our, our imagery flight, the aerial imagery flight for next fall, about a year from now, and kind of how those pieces will fit together within our existing data sets and how everything will function. So Darrell's been busy plugging away on a number of different things. With that being said, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Skolczek. Any, uh, questions on the community development engineering?
Mr. President?
Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Baer? No, go ahead.
Mr. Skolczek, I, I was just wondering for public information if you had any updates on, on, um, Second Street and twenty-two with the lights? And I see they got, uh, Museum Drive and twenty-two up and worked, Twelfth Street up and going again, but, uh...
Yeah, so, in, in that specific case, what we found was there were some, uh, unique features that had, uh, ultimately broke inside that, the cabinet for the functionality for the Twelfth Street and Highway twenty-two traffic signal. Looking at traffic volumes at the intersection of Twelfth Street and Highway twenty-two, and then looking at the other traffic volumes further to the south, there's significantly less traffic volumes, and so what they did is ultimately, um, they pulled some of those components out of that traffic signal box and moved them up to the higher traffic volume intersection. So that's why then the, the other traffic signal to the south got, uh, got pulled out of service right now and it's in flash mode. So, working on getting all of that fixed. I know, uh, Public Works Director Prowse may want to provide any additional information if you have any other questions on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess this is just, uh, at the staff in general, my question is, um, because we approved the, the letters for the roundabouts and doing those improvements. At one point, we were talking about the roundabouts and placing things, possibly, uh, working with DOT, placing welcome signs in the roundabouts or other items. Um, any news on that?
I've not heard a definitive yet, so.
Mr. Keller's popped right up, so I thought maybe he just, he just let you report the bad news, so. Or the no news, I'll put it that way, so.
The, uh, we'll definitely be sure to check in with, uh, the district office here in Dickinson. I know Mr. Rob Rayhorn, the district engineer, was actually leading the charge, uh, looking at, uh, what, if any, standards could be in place for, within roundabouts, because there's been a number of areas throughout the state that's been asking for similar things, such as maybe an entrance sign or something along those lines, so, um, so they were, the district engineers were assigned to look at opportunities and, uh, what standards may look like if this were to be approved, so. That's the, the best available data that I have right now, so.
All right. I know it's doable. I mean, across the country, and there's a wide array of different things in the middle of roundabouts, so.
Uh, Mr. Skolczek, do they allow blockage of any sort of vision in those? I mean, I've, I've, just from experience, I think they try to keep some of that open in the middle.
I would say there's probably a little bit different sets of, of, uh,
Regulations.
Operational, uh, theory on that topic. Starting back earlier in my career, mind you, that was about twenty years ago, uh, the idea was that the oncoming headlights would actually be facing into each other, and so the intent was to actually block off visibility. Some of those theories have changed with time, and so, um, uh, so.
I would think something in the middle would stop people from driving through.
Through it.
Our, our intent with these roundabouts is to provide access with, uh, even oversized truck traffic loads, but not physically drive through the middle, so that, that is our goal, so.
I know there's been several situations where people just kept going straight instead of roundabouting.
Yes.
Thus the skid marks aren't more so.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions for city staff? All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners. We're on the commission comments. Our, well, there are no, no one signed up for public comments, so we're on to commission comments.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Baer?
I, I will not be present ni- at the next meeting. I'll be down in Bismarck at the League of City Executive Board Me- Meeting, so I'll be at the winter Me- uh, meetings.
Okay.
I'll be here afterwards.
All right, thank you for that update. Anyone else?
No.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.